Hey gang, welcome to the Lab Girl Circle. It's your girl, the Lab Girl. Today will be a 30-minute study session on fixation. Thank you guys so much for joining me for this 30-minute study session with me. I really appreciate you guys joining today. We will get started with the stream very soon. You guys, if you have any questions as far as you know what we're speaking about with fixation, please leave it in the comment section down below. And Alicia, yes, it is 5:00 PM Central Time. So, right now it's 5:09, so we can go ahead and get started. And today I decided to do... Today I decided to do a 30-minute study session, so we're gonna try to go as quick as possible, but don't worry you guys, um, this will only be part one and we're only gonna cover at least two to three fixatives, not so many to where we're trying to cram everything in fixation chapter. But we will cover at least, we'll get started with some of the fixatives. And we'll have several parts of fixation to cover, so this is just part one of the fixation chapter. Thank you guys for being here with me today for the first 30-minute study session on fixation. I hope you guys have your books. Um, the book that I'm using is the Frida Carson um, third edition self-instructional text, uh, text. So, that's the book that I have. And then I'll be quizzing you guys a little bit later um, in the stream. So, we can see exactly how I come up with the questions with your actual study book. So, get your book ready. You can also catch this on the replay. But I want to make sure that we start it with fixation um, to get us started off, so we can go ahead and go from there. And we'll break down the book throughout the, you know, few months. So if you guys are studying for fixation, this is a great way to help each other out. We would do these live sessions, um, study with me sessions, and um, we'll cover as much as we possibly can within these lives to help you pass the ASCP. Alright, so let's go ahead and get our book. And we're gonna start with chapter one, which is fixation. Okay, you guys, so the first important thing when it comes to fixation is defining the purpose of fixation. A lot of you guys actually reach out to me and you have um, questions about how to study, what are my studying tips? I have a lot of questions, um, or I get a lot of questions about studying, how to study, how I studied to pass ASCP. And I have um, a lot of videos on my channel for study tips and study guides. So, I created this 30-minute study, uh, study session, so we can be able to break down the book together. And you guys leave me feedback on um, you know, how this live went for you guys as far as did it help you study, or did it give you some type of insight on how to study your ASCP book, or how to study your Frida Carson book? I understand that the test has a lot of questions and you're only gonna get 100 questions on that test. And some of the things that we may go over may not even be on the ASCP. But the goal is to be able to understand and read Frida Carson, so that way whatever question that they do ask you, you have a good process of elimination and you're able to at least cross out at least two of the incorrect answers and you can feel confident picking the right answer because you know that the other two answers, it just, it's just no way, you know, that that can be a part of the answer. Um, there's so much to read with the book and there's so many questions. So, the goal here is to know that you can't retain everything in this book. But the goal is to know if they ask you one question, how many ways can you answer that question? And you know, what just sounds like the best answer and feel confident in your answer. Alright? Okay, so I've done enough chit-chatting, let's go ahead and get into breaking down your fixation book. So, the first thing you wanna do is define the purpose of fixation. And if you look in the, um, whichever book that you guys have, it should be some objectives. And in that book, you wanna define the basic things of fixation, which is ortalysis, fixation, artifact, pigment, non-aqueous fixative, coagulating fixatives, additive fixatives, hypertonic, and isotonic. Okay, so, within this chapter, I wanna start basically, I'll let you guys focus on the functions of fixatives, the actions of fixatives, um, the factors affecting fixation, which is the temperature, the size, the volume ratio, and the time. Those are the things that you guys definitely need to know at the beginning of fixation. Now, there is a, a chart that I posted um, on my Instagram, or actually, there's a chart that I posted on YouTube in my community tab. It's the fixatives chart, which has like a breakdown of your additives and your non-additives, your non-coagulants and your coagulants. I'll repost it again today after this, um, after this, um, live. So you guys definitely need to make your own flashcards and understand, number one, what is an additive? What's a non-additive? What's a coagulant? And what's a non-coagulant? Okay, so the first thing is, let's do some definitions. Okay, so, the great thing about your, your histology book is, if you look in the back of your histology book, depending on, you know, what book you have, there are some definitions in the back of your book. And you guys will probably hear me flipping through my book. So there's some definitions that you can look up, just so, just so you know exactly what is what. Alright, so, let's see here. First, there's an additive. If you look at an additive, it's a chemical or substance that adds on to or combines with another substance, usually, usually improving, strengthening, or altering it. Many fixative molecules add on to tissue proteins, altering or stabilizing them in the process. So that's an additive. With the non-additives, if you look at it in your book, is normally, is normally the alcohols, acetone, and acidic acid. Okay, now, one way that I remembered additive versus non-additive is, if you wanna make a, if you wanna make a flashcard, um, I remembered it as all the As. So, alcohols, acetone, and acidic acid. That's how I remember what a non-additive is. And for the non-coagulant and the coagulants, so let's see, let's get the definition of a non-coagulant and a coagulant. And also in your study, in your actual study book, the um, assessment workbook, there's a definition chapter, a glossary in the beginning of that as well. So... Alright, so, coagulation is cloudiness, um, flocculation, and clot formation or stages or grades. In the process of coagulation, several reagents coagulate protein sols during the process of fixation. Alright, so, a non-coagulant is like a thin, the summary of the additive versus non-additive fixes, and coagulant versus non-coagulant. So, non-coagulant is a thin mesh, and then coagulant is a thick gel. So for the non-coagulants, which would be formaldehyde, glutaldehyde, glauxal, oxymium testosaride, osbic acid, and potassium dichromate. And then your coagulants are mercure chloride, chromic acid, pickic acid, zinc salts, cupric salts, all the As, alcohols, acetone, and acidic acid. So, remember all the As. AAA, if you see something with alcohol, acetone, acidic acid, those are your non-additives because remember, non-additive, so all your As. And then also too, you can put that those As are also your coagulants. So we'll get into that a little deeper, um, either later within the stream or on part two. Alright, so, let's go ahead and go into the main fixative. That's the first, um, knowing your fixes, knowing what's an additive, a non-additive, a non-coagulant, and a coagulant, that's really important in the fixative, in the fixation chapter. They will have those type of questions on the ASCP. Okay, so, we go ahead and get into simple aqueous fixatives or fixative ingredients. Again, leave your question, um, or any comments that will help each other out in the chat below. Alright, so let's go ahead and start with, um, your simple aqueous fixes or fixative ingredients. To understand the compound fixatives that constitute the majority of fixative, we must understand the properties, functions, and actions of each of the individual ingredients. The following are water-based or aqueous fixative ingredients are discussed in this text. Okay, so, the key thing is, these are simple aqueous fixes, which means that they are water-based fixatives. So most of these have water in them. So that's why they're called simple aqueous fixative with water. Okay, so the ones that are a simple aqueous, which can go on a different chart, which would be acidic acid, formaldehyde, glutaldehyde, glauxal, mercure chloride, oxymium testosaride, pickic acid, potassium dichromate, zinc salts, and others. Okay, so we know that acidic acid again is AA, so we know that that is a non-additive, and we know that that's a coagulant. So we know that's a non-additive and a coagulant, and we know that that's a aqueous fixative. It has water. Uh, formaldehyde, well, actually, let's go back here. Acidic acid actually is both a non-coagulant and coagulant. I meant to tell you guys that. It just depends. Um, for, uh, formaldehyde, it's a non-coagulant. But let's go ahead and just talk about acidic acid first. Acidic acid normally in, um, in a fixative, acidic acid is known for swelling the tissue. Let's see if they have a definition for acidic acid here in the book. They don't, but... Acidic acid is normally swells the tissue, and alcohol normally shrinks the tissue. So they normally, um, do the opposite. So if you come across a fixative with both, they're gonna counteract each other. One with, one with acidic acid normally has, um, alcohol in it to shrink it. So it's like a counter effect. Um, so, let's just go ahead and talk about some things that you need to know about acidic acid that may be on the ASCP. So the first thing is, um, concentrated acidic acid is also called glacial acidic acid because of its freezing point. Acidic acid does not fix or destroy carbohydrates, and it does not fix lipids. It penetrates very rapidly and leaves tissue very soft. These are all the things I want you guys to break down these key points of these fixatives. Because maybe in class, you guys are probably breaking these down as well, um, breaking these, um, down as well in, in your class. But that way, you know, you don't have to remember every single thing that you're reading in this book. So, with acidic acid, you wanna make sure you know that it does not fix or destroy carbohydrates. Okay, it's both a coagulant and a non-coagulant. Just depends. Acidic acid normally is, normally swells the tissue. Uh, it does not fix or destroy carbohydrates, and it does not fix lipids. Acidic acid penetrates very rapidly and leaves the tissue very soft. And it says, "A major use of acidic acid in fixives is the precipitation and preservation of nucleoproteins." It's added to many fixative mixtures because of its ability to fix nuclei." That would definitely be on your ASCP if you get that question. Baker classified acidic acid as a non-coagulant, stating that its, um, precipitating action on nucleoproteins is different from that on the non-nuclear proteins. It increases protein, it increases protein swelling, which remember I said it swells, more than any other fixative. This is decided a disadvantage because acidic acid is sometimes added to other fixatives to counteract the shrinking effect of another reagent. So, that's why I said that it's sometimes added, if there's, um, alcohol in something, they'll probably, we can add acidic acid to counteract that shrinkage. So that's why it's both a coagulant and non-coagulant. And is best for preservation of nucleoproteins. Alright, now let's see if I can find a question, a test question on what we just covered. Let me just go over one more thing with acidic acid. Um, another key thing is, red blood cells are lysed by acidic acid, and thus their preservation is poor in any fixative containing acidic acid. I do know that I've gotten that question, probably a lot of you, um, guys have, if you watching me, you've already taken the ASCP. Uh, you probably will get this question. They may ask you, um, what fixative lyses, um, red blood cells? That would be acidic acid. So, red blood cells are lysed by acidic acid. So what I would probably do if I was you guys, I would put, um, good for nucleoproteins, but lysed red blood cells. Also, you wanna know that, um, as far as the storage, acidic acid should be stored at room temperature and away from strong oxidizers. Um, acidic acid can cause severe burns. Um, disposal limit is 10 ppm. Uh, with all acid dilutions, acidic acid should be added to water and never the other way around. And sometimes you'll find yourself working in a lab and you'll have acidic acid and you'll have water. And it just, we're all, we're all like, they were like, we forget which one goes into which. So you always add to water, never the other way around. Okay, um, let's see here. Let me check if I can find you guys a, a couple of questions. Okay, we'll come back to the questions, cuz I can cover a little bit more. Alright, thank you guys for joining the, um, 30-minute study session on fixation. I really appreciate it. Any questions or comments, please leave them in the, um, in the comment section below, and we'll get to those later. Okay, so as far as acidic acid, we're good there. Let's go ahead and go to formaldehyde. Formalin is our most commonly used fixative. So, this is why it's important that you break down fixation, because we don't use a lot of fixatives in the lab. It's mostly formalin. So, it's really important that you know this for the ASCP. So let's go to formaldehyde. Formaldehyde is non-coagulant, which again is on your chart. If you have the same book as me, it's on page four, um, in your Frida Carson third edition book. And formaldehyde is non-coagulant. Alright, so, formaldehyde is a colorless, uh, gas commonly obtained and used, um, in the laboratory. Thirty-seven percent to forty percent solution in water. So, it's made, it's an aqueous solution, and it's non-coagulant. Alright, so some of the main things that you do need to know about formalin or formaldehyde, um, that will probably be on the ASCP, which would be, to prepare a 10% formalin solution, we dilute one part of the stock with nine parts of water. The resulting solution is 10% formalin or 3.7 to 4.0 formaldehyde. Commercial stock is a 37% to 40% formalin, which contains 10% to 14% methanol added by the manufacturer to help prevent this polymerization. Now, the way I want you guys to remember the, I'mma call them the aldehydes. I think, and we can, I'll correct myself if, if I get to that point, but I think I broke it down to like three aldehydes. I think I broke it down to formaldehyde, and then I think I broke it down to paraformaldehyde, and then I had glutaldehyde, and then glauxal. So that's four. That's how I did, that's how I remember the aldehydes. Okay, so, for, for, for formaldehyde, first thing is, this is normally used in the laboratory. The stock, um, the stock to prepare, to prepare formalin, it is one part stock with nine parts, nine parts of water. And now we get into the paraformaldehyde, which is used in EM. Many of you probably, um, have not worked in EM, which is electron microscopy. Um, but that is, paraformaldehyde is used in many electron, uh, microscopy labs uh, for preparation of fixative solutions because it yields a pure formaldehyde solution. The methanol added to commercial formaldehyde solution is a coagulant and has been considered undesirable for ultrastructural studies. For depolimerization, pure formaldehyde, paraformaldehyde must be heated and made slightly alkaline. Therefore, it is difficult to prepare large quantities of solution. Formaldehyde is both non-coagulant and an additive fixative. It reacts with tissue groups, primary group found in amino acids that contain a reactive hydrogen. So what it, what, what it does is, it perform, it forms methylene bridges that link protein chains together. Alright, so these are some important things to know. The greatest binding for formaldehyde occurs between pH values of 7.5 and 8.0. Lipids are preserved for formaldehyde, but they are not made insoluble and prolonged storage in formalin leads to gradual loss of lipids. When tissue is processed for embedding and paraffin, the lipids are dissolved by alcohol and xylene. So, if you have the same book as me, uh, make sure you study on page 10. Um, picture I-10, and you wanna study I-11 and I-12. So, important, lipids are preserved by formaldehyde, but they are not made insoluble and prolonged storage in formalin leads to a gradual loss of lipids. Another key thing about formaldehyde, formaldehyde does not fix carbohydrates, but it stabilizes and fixes the protein in such a way that much of the glycogen is trapped in the tissue. Formaldehyde penetrates and adds very quickly, but it fixes very slowly because it takes a long time to crosslink the tissue proteins. Any loosely bound formaldehyde can be removed easily by washing in water. When the tissue is well fixed in formaldehyde, the many crosslink prevents alteration during processing and staining. However, the, however, tissue that is poorly fixed in formaldehyde can be read in nature by alcohol and heat leading to artifact information. Formaldehyde causes less shrinkage than any of, any other fixatives because much, much of the shrinkage resulting from fixation occurs in the subsequent processing steps. It should be stated that formaldehyde allows less shrinkage in the subsequent processing steps than many of the other fixative. Formaldehyde hardens tissue more than any other fixative except, except for ethanol and acetone. It is relatively cheap and stable fixative and allows more special staining technique than any other fixative ingredients. So formaldehyde can be used in a simple aqueous solution or with any addition of sodium chloride to achieve correct osmolity. But those solutions become very acidic by reacting with atmospheric oxygen and formic, formic acid, which is the black acid hemintin or formalin pigment. And that is in the picture, the I point 11. And I posted that picture on the, um, community board on my page on YouTube. It's formalin pigment. That picture will possibly be on your ASCP test in how to remove formalin pigment. There's gonna be three pigments, and formalin pigment would be your first pigment on how to remove. Okay, so Kiana says, real quick, I have the fifth edition, it's chapter four. Great, Kiana. Alright, okay, good. Thank you guys. So, uh, you guys are in chapter four. Okay, so, formalin pigment, number one. Okay? So we're gonna be jumping all around here because things will be coming to me. They may come to you, pop them up in the questions below, and it's fine. So, the first thing is, you wanna know about black acid hemintin or formalin pigment. Tends to form when the pH of the solution drops below 6.0, and the pigment can occur with fixation in any acidic solution containing formaldehyde. The question would be, formalin pigment can be prevented and it can be removed. The pigment is prevented by maintaining a solution of pH near neutral and using the appropriate volume ratio of fixative solution. It can be removed by treating tissue sections with alcoholic pickic acid or alkaline alcohol. So that will be possibly one of your questions, cuz there're gonna be three pigments. So we just covered formalin pigment. This is everything pretty much formal, formaldehyde or formalin at this moment. So, formalin pigment, how can formalin pigment be removed? That's with alcoholic pickic acid. Formalin pigment will reduce silver solutions using procedures for staining melanin, fungi, reticuline, and spiraki. The pigment is biorefringent and can be monitored by polarization before staining, before silver staining, or it can be bleached or removed if necessary. So you wanna make sure that it does not drop below 6.0 or that formalin pigment will occur. Okay, so, let me see here. Okay, so, I'm gonna jump around real quick because since we just talked about formaldehyde and paraformaldehyde, right? Let's go ahead and jump to, we'll come back, but let's go ahead and jump to the other aldehyde, which is glutaldehyde. That's how we're gonna do this, and we'll go back. But I want you guys just to put this down as your four aldehydes. So, formaldehyde, paraformaldehyde using EM, formaldehyde is normally used, it's a common thing we use in the lab. Glutaldehyde. non-coagulant. And that's also used in E M as well. So glutaldehyde is also an aldehyde, but it differs from formaldehyde in that is deep, in that it is a D aldehyde with an aldehyde group on each end of the molecule. It acts very much like a formaldehyde in cross-linking proteins. However, the extra aldehyde group is not involved in most, in most cross-linking reactions. It is left free to react in any method using shift-free agent for the detection of aldehydes. Therefore, this is really important. Therefore, techniques using shift-free agents such as the periodic acid shift, which is the P A S that you guys are aware of, cannot be used on glutaldehyde fixed tissue because false positive results will be attained. Glutaldehyde fixes at the rate at which it penetrates, but it penetrates slowly and poorly. Because it fixes as it penetrates, which is slow, the penetration into deeper parts of the tissue is probably impeded. Therefore, gross tissue sessions must be thin. So I use glutaldehyde whenever I um whenever I am grossing muscle samples. I submit a piece for E M and it's a very thin piece and I put it in glutaldehyde and fix it overnight cuz it can fix slowly. So glutaldehyde is most frequently used for the fixation of specimens for E M because it preserves ultrastructure. The best of any aldehydes. So that's really important when it comes to the glutaldehyde. They'll ask you basically what it's not best for, which is the P A S shift-free agent. And they'll ask you what, you know, it preserves the best and it's gonna preserve ultrastructure. It preserves ultrastructure the best of any of the aldehydes. It tends to overharden tissues, so fixation should not be prolonged. The book says usually two hours or less and glutaldehyde is recommended for fixation. And then the tissue should be transferred into a buffer solution for holding. Because of its poor penetration, overhardened properties, glutaldehyde has not found wider acceptance as a fixative for light um microscopy. Um another thing that may be on your A S C P, when should glutaldehyde be prepared? It says um the reagent should be prepared just before use. So that'll probably be on the A S C P as well. Alright, glutaldehyde is a sensitizer and can cause irritation to the respiratory tract, digestive tract, and skin. Um the one thing about these fixatives, it will tell you storage. It'll tell you as far as like the hazard, um the hazardous warning labels. Um so that's definitely important for you guys to understand as well. You may not have to remember um every single thing, but um I, I don't recall me getting these type of questions on the test if I'm being honest, as far as like if it's a sensitizer or oxidizer. But it's just really good to know whenever you're handling these type of um chemicals. And let me see what else on this one. I think that's, I think that one's okay for that. Okay, we're a little bit over thirty minutes, but that's fine cuz we got started a little late. Alright, let's go ahead and go to glaxo. This is a non-coagulant, so I'll call this um the last of the aldehydes, in my opinion. So that's how I remembered it. So glaxo is the smallest um D aldehyde and it's typical, it's typically supplied as a forty percent aqueous solution. So if they ask you, what is the smallest D aldehyde, you know it's glaxo. Um, so it's the smallest of the D aldehyde and typically supplied is a forty percent aqueous solution, which is water-based. Um, another thing to know about the glaxo, which um I remember is some of the artifacts seen with the formaldehyde fixation such as smudgy nuclei and distorted staining are not seen with the glaxo fixation. Prolonged storage of tissue in glaxo um fixatives. There is a slight reduction of staining, but this can be usually compensated with prolonged staining times. Most special stains are satisfactory after glaxo fixation. Some iron may be leached by acidity of the fixative. The staining of H pylori um is unsatisfactory. Erythrocytes are lice and granules of ascenus field, ascenophils are dissolved. So a question could be, what lysis, R B Cs? Uh was, you know, is glaxo, is glaxo good for erythrocytes or H pylori? That would be no. So you wanna make sure you understand what fixative is good and isn't good for that, for that tissue. Uh let's see here. Uh as far as the safety concern, glaxo does not give off fumes, but it has a serious health hazard rating. And it says you can see your safe, go to your safety page and it is, let you know the rating for that. It can cause skin irritation and the threshold limit value is zero point one. And let me just go back. I think I told you guys the flash for the formaldehyde, um. Let me see here. For the exposure limit. Let me just check on that. I think it's zero point seven five for the exposure limit for the formaldehyde. P P M. So it looks like we're gonna stop there. Then what, what we'll do is we'll get into mercury chloride and everything for part two. But just for this first section, study, of course, say like I said in the beginning, the basic of the fixatives, tissue storage, pH, things of that nature. But when you're starting to get actually into the actually, to the actual fixations, what you need to actually make your um your cards, your flash cards with, this is how, I'm giving you an example, this is how I would like for you guys or try to just some, an outline of how I broke my fixatives down because I cannot remember every single thing in the book. So the key things was remembering these fixatives because you're gonna have to break down special stains later, which, which is very thorough as well. So just to recap, break down your, your aqueous fixatives, your coag, your additives, your non-additives, your aqueous, your non-aqueous, your non-coagulant and your coagulant. Know which is which, if they're both, if they're one, or if they're the other, right? Start with the very first one. That's why in that, in that chapter is, gives you literally ten or it gives you nine and it says others. So the main ones, acidic acid, what we did today for all the, from all the aldehyde, the aldehyde family. These are little things I did to remember things. So I called it the aldehyde family, formaldehyde, right? Paraformaldehyde, um glutaldehyde and glaxo. Once again, I didn't, I never used glutaldehyde until I, until I, you know, actually started working in neuropath. So you may not even use glutaldehyde, but just because you don't use it, Frida Carson will possibly still want you to know what's, you know, read about it. That's why it's important to read this book, break down this book and then go to your questions, okay? That's been my main thing with you guys from the time I started, you know, my channel here because I know how, how crazy this book can get and I know that it's a lot of material. So before we go, I'm going to go ahead and go through a couple quiz questions with you guys. And I did it this way because I tried to pick out questions after I was done reading this book and I broke everything down. I then went through my study question books and I actually tried to pair questions with the chapter, right? From what I was currently reading. So these couple of questions I got for you guys, they will be um based upon, basically formaldehydes, okay? So if you know the answer, go ahead and drop the answer down in the comment section. If you don't have time to do the answers today, you can listen to this live again and you can post your answers on my community tab as well. So let's go ahead and get to one of the questions that I got for you guys. Okay, so to prevent polymerization of formaldehyde, which of the following is added to the commercial stock solutions? Methal alcohol, formic acid, paraformaldehyde, sodium phosphate. So go to your formaldehyde portion of your book. For me, it's, it's um chapter one. For you guys, if you guys got the fifth edition, it is chapter four, I think Kiana said. So go to the formaldehyde and go down to where it talks about um polymer, polymerization. So to prevent polymerization of formaldehyde, which of the following is added to the commercial stock solutions? So I'm gonna go to that part. Okay. So in the book, I see it says, um parafor, uh paraformaldehyde is used in many E M laboratories for preparation of fixative solutions because it yields a pure formaldehyde solution. The methanol added to commercial formaldehyde solutions is a coagulant and has been considered undesirable for ultrastructural studies. So I'm going to say that it is methanol. And they got methal alcohol as the, one of the options. So let's see if that's the answer. I think it's methal alcohol. And it's gonna take some time. Yep, that's the right answer. Methal alcohol is added to thirty-seven to forty percent formaldehyde solutions to prevent polymerization. So it's gonna take some time for you guys to actually, once you actually read the fixation chapter, don't, you don't have to go to the next chapter just yet. Actually go through your fixation study guidebook with all the questions. And that way you can actually like try to go through and try to find all the questions that you think go with that chapter, you know, wh- what you read. And if I go to the word um to prevent polymerization of formaldehyde, use your definition, use your glossary. Okay, so when I go to polymerization, it's a chemical reaction in which two or more small molecules join together to form a larger molecule containing repeating structural units of the original molecules. Methanol is added to stock formaldehyde solutions to retard polymerization. So you can actually go through these things very slowly. You don't have to rush through fixation. Alright, let's go to the next um question I got for you guys. I won't go through all of them cuz there's a few. So I'll find a way to actually, you know, give you guys the other questions so we don't take up too much of your time. Alright, so let's see here. And I'm only finding questions about what we talked about today, right? Okay, so the best results when using formalin as a routine fixative, it must be made acidic, basic, neutral, or isoelectric. For best results when using formalin as a routine fixative, it must be made acidic, basic, neutral, or isoelectric. Remember, if formalin drops below a pH, right? That's how you get the formalin pigment. So you wanna make sure that the formalin must be made neutral. So that's the answer to that. Okay, another question for you guys is let me see. Okay, to prepare a ten percent solution of formalin, which of the following amounts of water should be added to a hundred mls of stock formaldehyde? You go to formaldehyde, what we just read, and you see how I found a formaldehyde stock solution question? That's how I do my studying. So to prepare a ten percent formalin solution, we dilute one part of stock with nine parts of water. That's, that most definitely will probably be on your test, you guys. So to prepare a ten percent solution of formalin, which of all amounts of water should be added to a hundred mls of stock formaldehyde? Is it a thousand mls of water, nine hundred mls of water, four hundred and fifty mls of water, or ten mls of water? Do you guys know? I give you guys a few minutes to answer the question. To prepare ten percent solution of formalin, which of the following amounts of water should be added to a hundred mls of stock formaldehyde? Okay, Alicia, you said ten mls? Okay, so if you're doing a ten percent uh solution of formalin and you have, and you need water, so you're gonna need more than ten, ten, ten mls of water. You're gonna need nine hundred m, mls of water because you're gonna use you're gonna need nine hundred mls of water because you're gonna, you're gonna have a ten, you're gonna have a ten percent solution of formalin. So it's gonna be nine hundred mls of water. And it's gonna be a hundred mls of stock from, formaldehyde. So what you would do is you would get um you would get a, a tall, um I don't wanna say beaker, but it's like a plastic measuring, um, it'll come to me, but you'll, it'll have like, it'll have a thousand mls on it. So you'll fill up nine hundred mls of that, be filled up with water. And then the rest of it, which would be a hundred mls, will be the formaldehyde. That will make it a ten percent solution of formalin, okay? Math can be pretty tricky, Alicia, so I understand. Uh Kiana said, yes ma'am, and very confusing, especially the version I have. Even my professor didn't like it much. Yeah, it can be really confusing. Um, that's why you definitely, you have to reteach yourself in a way. Um, no disrespect to your professor because I know even my professor, it, she was a little confused, but um, that's why you have to break it down to how you can understand it. And you have to break it down like twelve times. So I get it, you guys. So that's how you'll prepare that nine hundred mls of water and then you'll do a hundred mls of the stock formaldehyde. That'd make a ten percent solution, okay? Alright, so the next type of formaldehyde question, cuz that's, you know, we covered mostly the aldehyde family, right? So let me see here, number, okay, here's another one. Formalin pigment may be removed from tissue by okay, I'm gonna leave this up to you guys. Remember, there's three pigments, right? I, we haven't spoken on the other two pigments, so we did speak on formalin pigment cuz we're talking about formaldehyde. So it can be prevented and it could be removed. So how do we remove formalin pigment? By running water, alcoholic iodine, alcoholic pyric acid, or potassium permanganate. Now, and this is, and this is where I say, let's go ahead and cross eliminate something, right? We haven't even talked about potassium permanganate yet. let's go ahead and cross eliminate something right we haven't even talked about potassium permanganate yet we didn't read anything about that running water we did say running water can prevent formalin pigment but let me just double check okay so let's see here so formalin pigment can be prevented and it can be removed right so it can be prevented making sure that it doesn't drop below six point oh so how can we remove it it can be removed treating tissue with okay good job uh Kiana alcoholic pyric acid great as far as the water cuz I don't want you guys to get um confused with the formaldehyde that goes back to what I said earlier it says any loosely bound formaldehyde can be removed easily by washing it in water right that's preventative but once it actually drops below the pH the pigment is there so how can we remove it and we remove it by alcoholic pyric acid so now you've already started in the aldehyde flashcards right but you're gonna have you're gonna have those different ones but now you need to start uh the pigment part because we know formalin pigment is a pigment that can happen during fixation that's the key these are pigments that are happening during pic uh during fixation and how can you treat it so you did good alcoholic pyric acid good job guys okay now let me go to another question for you guys okay so this goes along with it formalin pigment would all would almost certainly be formed when the pH of the formalin is five point oh six point oh seven point oh or eight point oh some key things we know right formalin should remain neutral but if it drops then we know we're gonna get the pigment it most certainly would be formed if it drops we know eight point oh is not the answer we know seven point oh is not the answer cuz that's neutral so it's either between five point oh or six point oh so let's if you guys know the answer go ahead and put it down in the chat formula pigment would almost certainly be formed when the pH of the formula is five point oh or six point oh so we already did process of elimination right there cuz we got the other two we know neutral seven we know it's not eight right so we're talking about the main things that we use every single day for fixative our main universal thing is formalin or formaldehyde okay so Kiana said five point oh you guys wanna answer to five point oh okay good job alright anybody else wanna answer before we give the answer okay so the answer you guys are right formula pigment tends to form at the pH of the solution drops below six and will also most certainly form in a solution of pH five point oh so good job you guys was right okay uh you guys are just not joining we are in the pop-up quiz section so please feel free to dropping answers um in the comment section and participate okay alright so let's see here got another question it takes time you guys because how I found formalin questions I want you guys to do the same because if you need to get down pyric acid try to find the pyric acid questions in your in your fixation quiz questions if you know you just got you just got finished studying um let's just say safety try to find literally safety and lab math those are like you can just cover everything but when it comes to these different uh like mercury chloride and all your other things like just make sure you try to get those questions that if it's nothing but you know five questions just try to get those questions cuz those most likely are going to be the questions that may or may not show up at least you know it if it does pop up alright let me see let me get you guys another question let's see number okay I got one the solution of buffered four percent para formaldehyde is cloudy the most likely explanation is that this is a troubleshooting question but it's we know it's para formaldehyde so we can go ahead and go to our para formaldehyde portion of our book and try to you know brush up on the answer so the solution is buffered four percent para formaldehyde is cloudy the most likely explanation is that the pH is slightly above seven point oh para formaldehyde is not totally depolymerize solution was not refrigerated at the preparation the toxicity of the solution is too low so I'm gonna give you guys some time to think about that one so remember we was we was in the para formaldehyde little section that we wrote right and we know we it talks about deep polymerization and you know we didn't talk about the toxicity of it so we can scratch that out the refrigeration part I didn't read anything about that but not saying it's not in there I just didn't read it but normally I think about the refrigeration part I'm thinking about the glutaldehyde remember if you submit something that's very thin it it needs to be fixed you know overnight or within a few hours so I think about refrigerating that so for the para formaldehyde is cloudy what do you think made it cloudy so I just literally took two off your list cuz we try not to make sure that we mix things up so let's just stick to the basics of what that's what that fixative is good for and what is not good for right that's that's the key to these fixatives what's in the fixative what is what is good for what is not good for what it'll do to the tissue if it's good if it's a good fixative for the tissue so what you guys think the answer is is it because the pH is slightly above seven point oh or the para formaldehyde is not tip is not totally depolymerize the solution was not refrigerated after preparation or the tox the toxicity of the solution is too low okay Kiana answered already you guys I'm gonna give you guys a few minutes uh a few seconds to answer and again even though this is a troubleshooting question right I want you guys to think outside the box even though this is a troubleshooting question don't let it trick you up because if you can remember just certain little keys about these things it don't matter if you ever seen it or not in real life you just know like oh I remember reading that I don't think that's it so Kiana you're right is the deep polymerization cuz if we go to the if we let's go ahead and go to the um para formaldehyde cuz they wanna trick you up and talk about it's cloudy but that you know let's don't get tricked up right so we know it's on this 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 section is really small so we know that we add methanol to commercial formaldehyde is a coagulant is not desirable for ultra social ultra structural studies for deep polymerization to pure formaldehyde para formaldehyde must be heated and made alkaline right so that's another thing see I didn't read the whole thing for you guys but we know that it needs to be heated so you guys can put that down too for para formaldehyde but let me just go ahead and read the answer to you guys the correct answer it it is um it you are you are right Kiana when para formaldehyde solutions are slightly cloudy it usually indicates that the para formaldehyde was not totally depolymerize so under para formaldehyde you could put things like it needs to be depolymerize it needs to be heated and made alkaline um that's really it with that with that small little and if you add methanol you can add methanol to it so those are like you know two or three things that you know you need to remember about that but if something don't seem right in your answer like the pH it didn't even talk about the pH not saying that that may not be a pH factor but it doesn't even I don't even see it talking about pH not saying that something won't happen if the pH changes but you know you just don't want to with the pH part that's normally with the formaldehyde if it drops for the for for the um formalin pigment so good job you guys alright we'll do two more questions and we'll go ahead and um in the live and then we'll we'll definitely have a part two I promise you guys uh let me see here okay so this actually goes along with it this is another para formaldehyde question right so this question says deep polymerization so we know we see the words deep polymerization we know it goes with para formaldehyde and I'm just doing this by memory with you guys so it's it's gonna click right deep polymerization hmm I know it's not formaldehyde it's gonna be para formaldehyde and I know it needs to be heated and I know that um I know it needs to be heated and I know it needs to be depolymerize so deep polymerization of para formaldehyde occurs with chilling of the solution the addition of acid adjusting the toxic the toxicity or heating of the solution so the next one I'm just gonna give you guys an answer it's gonna be heating of the solution cuz it says in your book para formaldehyde must be heated and made alkaline therefore is very difficult to prepare large quantities of the solution and you guys can correct me you know if you guys got a different edition um of this book if it if it's saying the exact words that I'm reading cuz I'm not really sure and I'm sorry about that I wish I had you know your guys book too but you know I hope it I hope it's similar you know from what I'm reading okay so we're gonna do one more question and let me see we learned a lot today about formaldehyde all the aldehydes aldehyde family and um let's see if I give you guys I did talk to you guys about acidic acid but I don't know if I have a question about it so let me see okay here's another aldehyde question for you guys tissue fixed in glutaldehyde is not satisfactory for the PAS reaction which is the periodic acid shift EM which is electron microscopy argentin stains or routine hemotoxicant and ESN stains so just for you guys who've been here you know the beginning of the stream you guys should definitely can do process of elimination on this one because I'm pretty sure you understand that we didn't talk about two of these things two of these answers so I'm gonna read the question again you guys and any of you guys know please feel free to put the answer in the um chat okay tissue fixed in glutaldehyde is not satisfactory for we talked about glutaldehyde the PAS reaction which is the shifts EM argentin stains and routine H and E so give you guys a few minutes to go ahead and answer that question and I'll give you a few minutes because you can go to your glutaldehyde portion of your book and read over that and it'll tell you what is not satisfactory for and what is best used for so I'll give you guys a few minutes okay so the answer would be PAS you guys are right if you answered PAS and in the book for glutaldehyde under that portion if you read glutaldehyde glue is great for EM for your EM tissue your EM specimen and also it says the reason this is the extra aldehyde group is not involved in most cross linking reactions is left free to react in any method using shift reagent for the detection of aldehydes therefore techniques using shifts reagent such as periodic acid shifts cannot be used on glued fixed tissue because false positives will be obtained okay now that will be it for this live today um this is part one again of uh fixatives fixation and I think we did pretty good I think we covered that's a lot just to to cover you know only a few of the fixatives what we'll do is we'll cover in the next part will actually cuz I skipped um some fixes for you so we'll briefly go over the ones I skipped which is like the ten percent aqueous formalin um the formalin saline calcium formalin uh actually you know what I would like for you guys to go over those once you get done reading all about formaldehyde and acidic acid and all your aldehyde groups and get comfortable with those um definitely just read over your ten percent aqueous formalin um your formalin saline your calcium formalin formalin ammonium bromide ten percent neutralized formalin ten percent neutral buffered formalin and alcoholic formalin that is in my book is is like in between formaldehyde and glue so read over those and then we'll go over those really quick um in the next or part two or a fixative and then cuz it's really that's a really quick um flashcards that I'm gonna tell you guys about those really quick tips we're just really gonna go down the line and talk about each um formalin what you need to make a flashcard to say on them uh what may appear on the on the ASCP that'd be very quick because the main things that I wanna get into would be mercury chloride osmium texosaride pick a gas it potassium dichromate zinc salts and the other fixatives cuz those are really important too because when we get into those we we are actually going to be remembering what's inside of zincers healies earth that's a little bit more in detail boon gender holly or Holland um so let's go ahead and we'll we'll just skim over all the formalin things um on our next part two we'll skim over those and you know just what you guys should make flashcards on and then before we go one more thing cuz now I see it so on your formalin on your formaldehyde flashcard that you're gonna make make sure that you know that disposal limits to formaldehyde must be monitored for the AR period um the permissible exposure limit which is called the P E L That's at zero point seven five ppm. Now. Let me tell you how I remember that, you guys just may remember it, right? But what I remember it is, because I know it will probably be on your ASCP, like these basic questions like that. I just remembered. My grandma being seventy-five years old, I know this sounds crazy, but it helps. Because your question could be, what is the exposure limit for the? Uh, the short term. Um. Or the permissible exposure limit, they may have zero point seven five ppm, or they may have zero point. Uh, or, you know, zero point seven seven or whatever, just. And it's not seventy-five years old, don't ask me why, but I did, so that's how, that's the easy way to get that. Think of an age, an easy way to get the answer right. And there's also a short-term exposure limit, which is S T E L. Over two ppm over a fifteen-minute period, but. The key thing is. That, um, exposure limit, the permissible one, that's zero point seven five ppm. Uh, let me see. Formaldehyde is carcinogenic. We want to make sure we understand that. And. I think we're good. So. We're good here, we'll go ahead and stop here, because we can keep going and going with formalin. Alright, guys, so. Go ahead and read over the things I told you to read over. And I'll. Choose a day next week to. Actually go over. Part two. And I will. Um, put up a notification like I did today. Make sure to follow me on my, um. Social media, the Lab Girl Circle on Instagram, if you have Instagram, I have a page, the Lab Girl Circle. And you can follow me there, and I post, um, quiz questions. And I post, um, tips. Study tips on there as well, I'm trying to get more active on doing that, and what I'm trying to do is. Post the same things on my community page, so you go to my, my page, the Lab Girl, you hit the community tab, that's where I literally keep you guys informed on everything, so try to check that. As much as possible, because that's where I actually communicate with you guys the most. But I can't leave the live. Without telling you guys. If you want to be a part of Tech Talk. Um. Which is my show here on YouTube. Where I talk to people just like you and me, we talk about histology. Your career, if you're a student, we could talk about. Your, how you studying, how school, there's so many things we could talk about that can help each other, you want to be a part of my show. Um, check it out, it's Tech Talk. And, yeah, you could be a part of it, just email me at thelabgirlcircle@gmail.com. And you could be a part of the show, so. I think we're good here, if you guys enjoyed this live on fixation. Be sure to give it a thumbs up, let YouTube know that you enjoy the content. Share this live, you know, keep listening to it, it's good, because you can listen to it while you're working. You can listen to it while you're cleaning, whatever you need to do, you can just, you don't have to watch it, it's a great thing for you to listen to. Um. Share it with other students, anyone you know who's passing or who's taking the ASCP. Uh, with your classmates. Anything you guys want to add to the live? Please feel free to, um, let me know, you can reach out to me. By, you know, my channel, any comment, I always, you know, comment or. You know, write back to you guys. Or you can DM me on Instagram at thelabgirlcircle.com, or you can just write me a message, and. You got any, um, suggestions or tips or anything? That you want to talk about, go in depth about, you know, I got you guys, so. Um, thank you guys for sharing my content, and I'm really, really excited about doing these. Um, these study sessions with you guys, and you'll be notified, make sure you turn your post notifications bell though, so you know when I. Um. When I'm going live again for another study session, or when another episode of Tech Talk will post. And thank you guys for joining me. Um, I really appreciate it, yeah, thanks, you're welcome, Kiana, thank you guys, Alicia. And everyone who is watching, I really appreciate your participation, and I hope these. Study sessions will help you guys pass the ASCP, okay? So, yeah, I will see you guys in the next live, and make sure you, you watch the, um, the community tab. And we can definitely, um, get started on part two, alright, I hope you guys have a good rest of your day. Bye. Oh, Barbara, I'm still here. I was about to click off, you have a question? Now, well, let me talk. Barbara, I'm still here, um, did you have a question for me? You're welcome. I'm still here, by the way, if you, if you wanted to. If you had a question for me, I'm not sure if you had a question for me. Okay, you're trying to answer, yeah, you just go to the chat. And it should let you, I'm sorry that it wasn't letting you, um. It wasn't letting you answer the questions, but. We're gonna go live again and. You'll be able to definitely answer the questions, I'll make sure, you know, just let me know. Um, if, if you're having some, some issues or some trouble hearing me, or you can't answer the questions, but. Feel free to listen to this on, um. You know, play it back, and that way. You can actually, you know, help yourself study, and what I'll do is, I have a couple more questions, you guys, on. On formaldehyde and, and some other things that we talked about today, so. What I'll do is, I'll go ahead and drop these questions on the community tab. And just, you guys, you can use those as some study, um, study questions as well. And make sure you're answering the questions, okay? I'm good now, but you was very informative, thank you so much. You're welcome. I'm so glad that I can help you guys, I really appreciate it. I'm sorry it went over thirty minutes. But we will definitely, um. Have part two, okay? We'll have part two and. And we'll, you know, try to get you guys through fixation, and then we can definitely hit up some other chapters, I thought this will be a. One of my, um, one of the gang, uh, which is, you know, she's in our community, she actually hit me up and she wanted me to go more in detail with fixation, so. I was like, definitely, you know, just give me some time and we can definitely come up with something, but. Definitely share this with your. With your classmates or anyone else that you know is studying for the ASCP. But, yeah, I'm glad you guys enjoyed the stream, I will see you guys, um, sometime next week, okay? And we can go ahead and get more into fixation and try to get through that chapter, because it's a very long chapter. And these study sessions will really help, I wish I had these whenever I was. I'm studying for the ASCP, so it's good that, you know, we can come in here and. You know, just have a place where we can actually try to figure out these questions and try to make it make sense for us. I really appreciate you guys joining me, I hope you guys have a, a great rest of your Sunday. And we'll go live, um, next week again, I promise. Alright, I'll see you guys, um, next week, and I hope you have a good rest of your day.